Of putting in, I think it was five house lots. And nobody's gonna want to buy a house lot that a butts the solar panels so close.
Is there any screening now between that lot and the solar?
It's just a stone wall right now where the, where you can see my.
I'm sure they wouldn't mind putting some screening there.
Right.
Um, you know.
Well, they initially had put that in.
We can add that back on.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal is to try and satisfy as many of the bodies as possible.
I mean, there is a row of trees there that shows on the area, but we cannot definitely add.
Yeah, they're sparse. They're sparse.
No, that's not a problem at all.
And the transformer, you know, if it produces energy that's harmful to anybody that lives, you know, in one of those lots, that again is a concern of mine. Cause that was changed.
How far is the transformer from her property line?
From the property line, it looks like it's about, what do you say, Rich? About a hundred and twenty feet?
That's a little closer than that. It's probably closer to a hundred.
Over ninety, yeah, ninety feet.
Yeah.
So my property is a lot of line.
Yeah, I don't see that being.
What are you saying, F?
I was nine.
All right, okay. What's your take on you?
Are you planning on having another, uh, meeting with the butters?
Uh, I mean, we're happy to. I mean, this is.
I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah.
You know, it's, uh, I think the major concern of most of the people is the screening.
Yeah.
Visibility. I mean, we've made that, can't make it any clearer than what we have already. The only thing I, I thought along middle where he described fencing, there was gonna be screening with trees there and not fencing.
Which part of the site plan?
Well, it would be on the, uh, north.
Right.
Has what happened back down this way.
Yeah, and in front also on the Tremont Street side. You had mentioned there's fencing gonna be there instead of trees.
When the, we showing the berm with the fence, solid fence to screen it immediately, but we would be doing plantings.
Also?
In front of it as well, I think we could do.
Yeah, and I think that that's part of what, I mean, I would regard as kind of an open conversation today is, I mean, we've got tools to work with. Now, what's the best combination of those for both, for these parts of the site? So, you know, recognizing that, you know, yes, we have a berm and a fence, but we could also do plantings. Conversely, we've got plantings, but we could also entertain a berm and a fence on the northwest port, uh, portion as well as, uh, screening on the southern portion.
I was just a little surprised at that because that would be like a immediate.
Like you're going by a prison.
Uh, mitigation, you know, as a tree.
That's what it'd look like. It'd be looking like you're driving by a prison.
We can install a wood fence. It does, doesn't have to be your standard chain link. I mean, there, there are other options.
Oh, how, how high was the berm gonna be?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what's the combination height of the, the fence and the berm on Tremont Street?
We, um, right now, it's a, it's a two-foot berm with an eight-foot fence on top.
Talking ten feet.
So that's a ten-foot visual screen that would be there immediately.
Immediately. But I mean, if, if the idea, you know, that trees, for example, in front of or behind the berm and the fence would, would add, you know, an additional, you know, layer in the northeast? I mean, that's something we need to talk about.
Yeah, I think you get instant, uh, mitigation, if you will, and then let the trees grow up at least.
What about starting fence line? I know it's cost prohibitive again to go from an eight-foot-high fence to a ten-foot-high fence, black vinyl coated, solves a lot of the problems. Your mitigation's already taken care of.
Yeah.
But I know it's costly on you gentlemen in order to be good to do it.
I, I, if, if this project rested on the margin of that, then yeah, I mean, that's, you know.
It's basically a no rent.
That's a different story.
Do you have to stick with your smart plan?
Yes, no, that, that is very much.
You sticking with that no matter what?
Yeah, I mean, I think to the, you know, gentleman's earlier point, I mean, we, we, we value this as a, as a land conservation tool. And, you know, there are actually a good number of existing projects nationwide and research programs at different universities. Um, that have been, you know, operating, growing food under solar panels for the last five, seven years. Here in Massachusetts and Arizona and Oregon, other places, the federal government is now actually contemplating funding a multimillion-dollar study to figure out how best to pair solar and agriculture in specific regions around the U.S. So, yeah, I would, I would say that this isn't, you know, completely new. Although it is, you know, yes, it's, it's new for Knighton, but I mean, people are doing this, you know, already. And so we are, you know, more or less, you know, uh, kind of plugging into that existing body of, of work. And I guess, you know, further, um, we're happy to talk about, you know, screening because, I mean, I think at the end of the day, for us, you know, this is the way that Jim can continue, you know, farming, you know, in transition into retirement. And, you know, we've been working as well with the representative of the landowner, Ian Ward, who's also in attendance today, about what future farming plans and succession plans might look like by bringing in new farmers to manage the land. And we actually are excited about the idea that, you know, Jim has been farming this land for thirty years. He knows it better than anybody. But who would be better than Jim to teach someone how to farm that same piece of land, you know, as we kind of transition into this next phase? So, you know, I'm, I'm personally excited about, you know, yes, the land use aspects of it, but the way that this program is designed, it's our incentive to subsidize this farming operation from the inputs and the labor to, you know, mitigating against, you know, loss every year. And I think it's a very, you know, smart way that the, that the state has, has designed the program because if there's no farming in a given year, well, we, we lose that. We lose that aspect of, of, of the economics. So that gives us and our project partners every incentive to make sure that, you know, the farmer is supported to do what he does.
I have a question. Under the smart program, is there a minimum megawattage that's required under the law? And also, is there a minimum amount of panels required under the law in the smart program?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I have a question. What are the panels made out of? And I know I've read some stuff about that being involved and whatnot inside of them.
Yeah.
And it's not exposed to anything outside of the panel, sealed panel.
Right.
But say Jim's, you know, running down one of this, you know, crop lines and tags one of the, the panels.
Yeah, it's good.
Now you have lead exposure.
It's a good, it's a good question. Um, so, you know, lead and cadmium are typically, you know, part of, um, perovskite solar cells. They're actually present in, in fairly noticeable, uh, levels, but they are not used in traditional mono and polysilicon solar cells. And, you know, there have been, from the manufacturing process, you know, yes, there might be trace amounts of these elements found within the silicon wafer itself, but that's encased within, um, you know, glass that is designed to resist shattering and then encased within the aluminum, you know, the rack with it, the case of the, of the panel. And, um, any trace amounts that you, you know, you might find, you know, in these panels are also insoluble. So you're not gonna have water leaking in and then leaching out. Like it's, it's fundamentally in an insoluble format. And so, you know, there is no, um, you know, record basically of, of like leaching of like these like materials, basically, you know, from mono and polysilicon, um, you know, panels, to the extent that there's anything present in them at all. But again, with, you know, with those types of panels, they're, the cadmium and lead are not, you know, part of that product. So, um, I mean, so all said, um, that is, it's a fair question, but it's, it's one that's fairly common.
Did you guys, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I just ask a question? Um, Gail Woodward, twenty thirty-five Maple Street. I'm not in butter, but I just wanna know what happens when a panel burns out? How many years are they supposed to last? How do they get disposed of? And whose responsibility is it? And is any cost to the town to get rid of them or is it the company there?
Good question. Um, so the, the panels are designed, you know, for a minimum of thirty-year life, but they're finding that, you know, they can operate far longer, forty, fifty years. I mean, some of the panels that were installed during the Jimmy Carter era back in the eighties out in Beverly, Massachusetts, are still working today. So they last a long time. But the, um, the panels themselves, um, you know, are monitored remotely and onsite through thermal imaging, through, uh, 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 electric, you know, basically electric or electronic dashboards that sort of give a real-time view of the performance and the health of these panels. So project owners will, you know, let's say, take a drone and fly over there, just for argument's sake, you know, a, an array, and you can thermal image where cracks, individual cracks that are centimeter-wide, where those exist within individual panels. So they get, you know, a map basically of where weak point, you know, weak points are. Because as it turns out, um, yes, a crack in the, in the glass of a solar panel, you know, may pose a, you know, fear of an issue, uh, let's say, just, uh, of the material itself on the land. But in order for that solar cell to perform as well as it can perform, you know, that, that issue of cracked glass has been, um, an issue that the industry has been designing this product to overcome for the last twenty years because it's a very common, um, source of degradation in the solar cells. So they manufacture these basically to have minimum cracking in the glass. And to the extent that there are, that there is cracking, that, you know, the, the conventional monitoring of these projects is such that that is what they look for and then they replace them accordingly, you know, because again, it has a direct impact on the production of the, of the facility. And then to your question about removal.
Yeah, where do they go?
Yeah, so, um, we have, you know, the, the part, part of the town bylaw here for decommissioning, um, coal charities. So you could put a letter of credit up. You could put a, a bond, um, that's basically available every year. So it's a set of funds that are available to, to decommission the project, take it off the site, restore the land to its original state. Um, and that's also a requirement that we have in all of our lease agreements with our landowners and a very conventional, if not ubiquitous, uh, tool that project owners have for, for solar.
May I ask, may I ask a question? I don't think he answered her question, but I think she wanted to know where physically do they go?
Yeah, physically.
Oh, I apologize.
And who pays, and who pays for that?
Oh, so the.
The, the, the bond they put up pays for it.
Okay, all right.
Exactly. Uh, and there, I mean, there, there is secondary value. You know, people who come in, either sell them again to, for another project or recycle them, you know, for, you know, um, for the raw material value. Uh, but, you know, they get recycled and, and, and dealt with as would, you know, any, any, uh, you know.
Somebody else makes money off them.
All right, okay.
Can I ask this?
I'm just gonna be dumped somewhere.
It's not going to the town of Knighton, like, until.
With the advancement of the, the efficiency of these panels and also the, the drastic lowering of the cost of the panels we've seen over the last ten, fifteen years, do you see more solar fields that actually they're gonna come in and just replace the panels because they're more efficient and can produce more power instead of, you know, letting them at least go out?
I, I think that's definitely gonna be a part of this industry at some point. I mean, you see it in winds today, you know, people going in and replacing turbines that were built twenty years ago. So I don't think solar will be any different.
I have a couple of questions for the abut. Would you be interested in another meeting with the developer? And if so, what are your, I, I know it's visibility. What are your primary concerns?
Well, I think between health, visibility and proximity, those would be the three big ones.
Property value.
Property value.
Property value, exactly.
I just wanna say, oh, sorry. I just wanna talk to three or four different real estate agents that I know and they have all the people that have sold because part, um, solar panels have gone up and they've had a hard time selling houses in the areas of.
They told us to put it on the market.
Yeah, I think screening has a lot to do with it.
I've been on William Street, off of William Street, Wellington Street.
Would you be, be settled to another meeting with, moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. Well, why don't we try to get that done and come up with a better screen and guess it?
I have a question. You said that the, the tax rate would be commercial, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And does Mr. Cabral?
The tax rate on the, on the, um, land.
On the solar?
On the land. The solar gets taxed by the square foot of the solar panel. Am I correct?
Is it just that, it's that chunk of land, correct?
Well, the chunk of land will be taxed at a commercial rate.
Okay.
Instead of the chapter rate that it's in. And then each panel is taxed based on the square footage of the solar panels.
Maybe just to put a finer point on that if you wanna hit on the pilot agreement. Yeah, and that's something that we are, are definitely interested in speaking with town.
Yeah, but we're running away from my, my second part of my question. I had an old boss that had a tree farm. And when he sold that land, he had to pay back all the farm taxes.
Right.
Does Mr. Cabral get charged because he changed the zoning of his property?
Yeah, they're gonna get charged and they're gonna pay for it.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a lot of money in this solar farm already?
And I'd just like to say something. In response to your question in the back about assessment, I would contact the town of Donmouth. They've built six or seven solar farms there to find out what their town assess, you know, they're assessing the values of the properties at. So that would contact Donmouth. You want them?
Now, so Mr. Cabral is very well aware of where his tax rate is going. In my last conversation, I asked you that question and they'll be taken care of by, by the company development, correct?
That's correct. That's one of the first conditions that we discuss with, with any agreement we put together. But yeah.
You would be the first one that's done that, by the way.
Yes. Yeah, which is news to me because that's how we've done, you know, our, our, our business for.
Make sure they're more reputable than other people, I guess, yeah.
I mean, you know, we can't, you know, we, we, we're to just, you know, try to do, do things right. So, um, to maybe to that end, um, you know, again, we would, we'd have every interest in discussing what interest the town would have in structuring a tax agreement. Um, and that can be, you know, conducted.
According to my town administrator, they'd be not. But that's what she told me.
No, they're not interested in.
The town won't be entertained in any pilot agreements is what I've been told. But I may be wrong.
Got it.
They live upstairs, you can go up there and ask them, but.
Might wanna.
We haven't made out too good with the previous pilot agreement, so.
Okay, sure.
I wouldn't be looking for one.
Okay.
But do what you want.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have that discussion just because I think there is some risk on the town's side if they don't enter into a pilot, given what the appellate tax board has recently said about the personal property of these solar arrays. So, kinda.
Absolutely.
Takes away all of that speculation and any potential for conflict in the future and you just come to an agreement.
Because once you're gone, new owners take over. Who's gonna take care of the agreement? Right. Who's gonna carry on an agreement? Does the agreement last in perpetuity? They do not.
No, they will last for a term of years. So probably twenty years and I think there are a few different ways that.
But again, as I stated, we've had two or three solar projects enter this town and they've won on Al Street specifically. It's already been sold three times in the last two years.
Sure.
Right. They just sell them. You build, you sell. That's, I understand the business. That's what your business is. I understand.
Do we wanna continue this?
We'll have that conversation certainly. I mean, if, if there's no interest, there's no interest, but if there's interest.
Yeah, um, what we'd like to say is you meet again with the butters and you can come back to us in a couple of weeks if you can accomplish that within a couple of weeks.
Like May first or you can come back the two weeks after that. That'd be better for you.
Yeah, we'd like to, um, target May first, so.
Because our primary goal here is to take care of the butters.
Yeah.
You know, we try to make them as happy as possible. I know there's a, there's gonna be a give and take. Now, I guess this project also was, comes under Dover Amendment.
Forty-eight section.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, if you, the butters could look up Dover Amendment, uh, that gives them the right to pretty much put solar wherever they want. Be like a school or something like that. What we try to do is negotiate as fair a balance as possible to make you guys happy and also make them happy, so.
We still don't have to approve this because of the Dover Amendment.
No, we don't, but.
We've said that before, right? And we act like the Dover Amendment is like, God, it's not.
Pretty much it is.
Okay?
Unchallenged.
We can still vote now.
Of course you can.
And I wanna be clear, the planning board is not here to protect development. We're not here to say you can't build homes, right? We're not. We don't care how many people are going into school. That's not our job to worry about how many people are having children or how many homes are being built. That's not our job here, you know?
Right.
To myself, I'd rather look at a house with a couple of kids outside playing than solar. Myself. I like, I like houses. I like kids. I'd like to ask, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if at all possible that if, um, the developer, BWC Greenbrook LLC is gonna talk to the butters, I'd like to have some recorded minutes of all the questions that were asked so that way we can have that information bruised out before they come back.
Well, at least let us know when the next meeting is.
Yeah, we were not hearing these questions and answers at even.
If we can go, we'd be more than happy to go.
I was a little surprised to hear that you guys had a community meeting. I was very surprised by that. You're the first people to do it. But I said to myself, they had a community meeting and we didn't know nothing about it. You don't have to notify us by law, right? But you could have appeased some of the people there and made them feel so comfortable that they wouldn't come here tonight. That's what I thought. It was something that was just a little too shady for me, you know? Somebody's gonna have a meeting about something that we have to act on. I wanna know about it.
Sure.
That's all I'm saying.
Obviously, we just have to be careful because of the open meeting law, but.
Right, you didn't have to, um.
Get a call.
Yeah, the meeting's gonna have.
We did have, correct. So as long as you only have two there.
Correct, right.
Well, we can post.
Or you can post, or you can post a meeting. That's correct. Public meeting.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, at this time, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we have BWC Greenbrook LLC return May first before, um, another public hearing.
Okay, one, okay, discussion on that. Uh, you mentioned that you had a health study. Can you provide the information?
Oh, I can provide that right now and electronically.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Can I say something quick? Can, I know you keep saying the butters come, but.
You can come to.
Of course you can. Anybody wants to come.
You can come to all our meetings if you'd like, ma'am.
Okay, I was just trying to find out what's going on in the town.
Thank you. We welcome you.
Anybody who wants to come.
You don't have to bring Woodrow every time.
Okay.
So again, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we have BWC Greenbrook LLC.
Okay, well.
LLC.
I'm sorry, I just need to bring to your attention that May first.
Is booked solid.
We have a public hearing with Bristol Aggie that's being opened up. And then we have the two continuations of Wellington Street with the Arujos and the continuation of Middle Street that we had tonight. So I just wanna bring that to your attention before.
Should it be May fifteenth would be the next?
May fifteenth.
Have you scheduled time for that?
Um, Bristol Aggie is scheduled for six fifteen and then the other two public hearings were continued to our meeting. So whenever that falls.
Bristol Aggie is the, yeah, probably gonna get a little turnout.
Yes, um, I do have to say Bristol Aggie is not a public hearing. I, I'm sorry. I need to clarify that a little bit. It is not a public hearing because it's just a site theme review.
Yeah, but it's a lot of stuff.
It's a very big. Uh, well, because it wasn't required to have a public hearing, I don't think so because it's not required to have a public hearing or not. Cause they're not going for any, um, variance or special permit. So there was no requirement for a public hearing and no, about a notification. That being said, that doesn't mean.
People paying attention will still show up.
Yes.
So I'm gonna resume my original motion and, uh, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion that we, um, hear BWC Greenbrook LLC on May fifteenth.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's made in second and continue this hearing till May fifteenth. Ales in favor?
Aye. Aye.
As opposed, it'll give you more time to get tower screening.
Sure.
I know it's a little disappointing.
Two weeks for the trees to.
I thought they made sure to track this, Jimmy, that you really.
I think another session with the butters would produce a lot. We're not gonna sit here and keep spinning our wheels on the height of this. I think in the end, it may be more beneficial. Okay, the hearing's continued to May fifteenth. And I'll be here again.
Great. All right, thank you. Six, do you have time for six thirty?
We start at six.
Did that do right?
We'll check with you.
Yeah, we'll make it closer to the date. I just.
Did they say this guy put land on it, this Jim? That guy's a land owner?
I need a representative to sign like the situation, yes.
I thought you said land owner. He didn't give it to me either, so.
Yep, I heard him.
Thanks a lot.
I have a question. I also have not been able to reach, uh, Woodrow Street.
Woodrow Street?
Yes.
Good.
And I noticed the other day on my wetland, it's all flagged recently. How do I find out who did that?
Are you all part of the Gusserson's Old Farm?
I do.
Okay, that's, yeah, probably done by.
Yeah, but they went right through my property. Yes.
Conservation without.
Okay. And how do I get contact with them?
I don't know. They put it up on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on the website.
That'll be my website. Yeah, cause on your land, they're a good seven hundred feet into my property with the flags, yeah, and it's open.
Are you guys still in session?
We're still in session.
Okay, wanna make sure.
Good night, Cable.
No, 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 we're not done yet. No.
No? Okay.
We're still in session.
Hey, guys, you guys go on the.
No, we're not done yet.
Did you guys go out? Are you up yet?
Yeah, out. Everybody out, please?
I'll, I'll email it to you.
They don't all listen. How you doing? Who are you?
Ian.
Ian Ward?
Ward.
Ward, absolutely.
Guys, thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it. Lucky you, dude, huh? Huh?
Really like drenched.
All the way.
Oh, all right.
They're the darn considering how. You're not leaving right here. You're not leaving yet.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I don't know. Wow.
Doesn't these numbers match what they've written? A square footage up here doesn't.
Did you give me that thing though?
I gave it to, I gave it to Woody. He signed it. Well, you have to sign it.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
That's then it becomes automatically.
Yeah, somewhere. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll listen. I think this here, the numbers don't match up with what he wrote.
Yeah, you know, I said the same thing. I was saying the same thing to Woody.
This doesn't match these.
Right. Well, this one is, if he, he's taking A to here, that one does. It's this one.
Yeah.
Cause he's taken, yeah, it should be forty-two, forty-seven, three, eight, five, not forty-eight, two, eight, seven. Yeah, yeah.
This should be forty-eight, two, three, seven.
That should be, that's right. Forty-eight, two, three, seven is right. And that should be forty. No, that's going to that. That should be forty-nine, three, eight, five, right?
Yeah, this doesn't.
This is going to that and that's going to that.
Yeah, let's, we're not, let's, let's continue the meeting.
Joe, I have a plan.
Right.
We'll get one more item.
I was saying that to Woody.
Mr. Gardner here?
Yeah, is that Mr. Gardner here yet? No?
Yeah, we have one more item, people.
What, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, but we need to wait for Mr. Rhines to come back.
Yes.
Yeah, I looked up that screening on the line today. I'm like, hmm.
Just something on the chapter.
Chapter land removal, you're, you.
It's got the Form A, right?
It, and that Form A, but yeah.
Yeah, but the numbers.
We're coming back, Cable. Relax.
I think we should table that Form A until the, the owner can make himself.
Forty-eight, here, forty-seven.
Present.
Yeah, but down here, it's.
Yeah.
That's.
They both say forty-eight, two, three, seven, and they shouldn't. This was a point. You're not gonna sign it because it's a, you're not gonna sign it because it's an error.
Before you took the thousand square foot up.
It's an error in the square footage of one of the lots. One's right.
You don't sign it, that's all.
Yeah, we don't, that's all. We're gonna, well, let motion to table it for next meeting then.
I'll make a motion to table the gardener Form A until the May first meeting.
Second, anyway. Motion's out there to table?
Second, thank you.
Okay, motion's made in second at the table. Form A for Gardner, ales in favor?
Aye, aye.
Ales.
I became a member of like Conservation Commission.
Really?
Yeah, I'm on the other side of the table.
All right, so the last item that we have, thank you.
Peter, good night, thank you.
Uh, the chapter land release, we're gonna need a motion to table, uh, because there was an error, um, noticed by the assessor on one of the applications requests. So they gotta resubmit.
Well, this has been nothing but a.
Continuation, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to table item?
Five E. Five E.
I will make a motion to table item five E, the review discuss act of chapter land release recommendation for fourteen twenty William Street until May first. Nope, only nineteen?
Motion's made in second and to continue to May first. Just, you can submit a new plan with the correct numbers?
Yeah.
You really don't need them here.
No, typically, they don't come. You, and you guys are just doing a motion to recommend or not recommend to the planning, um, to the board of selection?
Yeah, so, no, not that one, the Gardener.
Oh, I'm sorry, the other one, the Gardener. That, I got the motion and.
Okay, so we just need something to, to clarify and, and put some new numbers in there, the plan.
Okay.
So we can sign it, all right? Planning Board is meeting Thursday, April twenty-fifth at seven P M. to go over the budget. Houses are pretty simple, straightforward budget, but if you want to be there.
I go to all the finance committee meetings because I like them.
I know you do.
Really?
Uh, if you hadn't responded to the anti-harassment training yet, to Gary, please do so.
Yeah, I, I haven't done it.
That is, uh, it's a ninety-minute training on Tuesday.
Such a training on Tuesday. I can't make it. I work on Tuesdays. I work Tuesdays.
So here's a, uh.
I already told them.
I'm going to try to go this time. Could you send this out to the members of Zet and your computer, the serpent lunch?
I didn't send it out, I just printed it for you guys.
The question is, how many of us can attend?
Attend what?
We can, three of us, if we.
No, that's for the luncheon, Joe, huh?
Even before.
Oh, you went, that's for the free lunch.
I went, yeah, right. You get a quarter of sub, it'll fill your cabinet.
Anyway, it's on Tuesday, May seventh, from twelve to one thirty, it's a working lunch. Douglas Healy, geologist with environmental strategies and management, will discuss the revitalization of industrial land. That's a good one for you. Around, oh, it's around Attleboro.
Yeah, stay away from Fort Twenty Spring.
Mary Ellen DeFries, Vice President of Community Development, will discuss the role of brownfield development, unplayed. I don't know, anyway, it's Tuesday, May seventh.
I can send that out by email.
Thank you, thank you. I might be away that first week of May, though.
Okay, look at this.
Wait, you have one, boss?
Well, you're getting a lot of things here. I think this is free also. Surfer annual meeting, Barrett's Fireside Grill.
Ooh. It's a good spread, boy, Woody.
The meeting pays to be there.
That's the perk. There you go. That's why I'm on Surfer. What day is April thirtieth? April thirtieth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
What time was the training?
Yeah, I'm going to share. We're going to read, start reading these things.
We can't read them all, though.
There's only three.
The city of Totten Public Hearing notices hereby given that municipal council will be given a hearing on temporary city hall. One forty-one Oak Street, Totten Chester Martin Municipal Council Chambers at seven